Good morning, everybody, and thank you for your patience. It is now 10:26 a.m., and we are ready to begin a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, February 27, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m., and you're always invited to join us here in City Hall. You can also view us live from home on your cable station, Channel 35, view us live via webcast from the city's homepage, or listen in via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labonch, Mysakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ruthy, Thomas, Weisine, Padilla, eleven members present in the forum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Galanter moves, and Mr. Pacheco seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number three, a request to continue that matter to Friday, March 1st.
Members, request to continue item number three to this Friday without objection. So ordered.
Also, request from council members' line to continue item number four to March 5th.
Request to continue item number four without objection.
Item number nine, a request from Building and Safety to receive and file that matter in as much as the assessment has been paid.
Item number five, that is?
I'm sorry, item number nine.
Item number nine, request to receive and file, members, without objection.
Do you wish to take up the commissioners now, Mr. President?
Before we do that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, I'd just like to continue item 14 for Tuesday, if possible.
Request to continue item number 14, also without objection. Now the commissioners, Madam Clerk.
Items 11 through 13 are confirmation of commissioners, Mr. R.D. Lottie, Ms. Deanne Marie Morris, and Mr. Michael Grobstein.
Okay, if we can have the commission nominees, please come forward at this time. Members, as our process usually allows, public hearing on the nominees before us has been held in committee, it's an opportunity for the rest of the council to ask questions or address the nominees before voting on confirmation. I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'd just like to comment on Mr. Grobstein, since he's going to be representing the San Fernando Valley, and the other two commissioners are going to be representing South Los Angeles, I understand?
Yes.
The South Planning Commission, and Michael Grobstein, the South Valley Planning Commission. I've looked at the information on Mr. Grobstein, which is extensive in his community affairs, his community activities, and awards, Father of the Year, Circle of Life, Jewish Home for the Aging, tremendous accomplishments, and I just have great confidence in you, Mr. Grobstein, that you will make sure the Valley is happy, and the Valley can make the people out in that community happy, because I know that your past track record of great accomplishments speaks for itself, so I would definitely support and urge a yes vote on that confirmation for the District of the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of our three commission nominees. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, you are all confirmed, and thank you for your service to the city. Fourth with, please, on those three appointments. Next item, please.
Next item on the regular agenda, item number one is an item noticed for a public hearing, and I believe there are cards on the item.
Let's call that special.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, I believe there are cards also.
Let's also call that special.
Next item is, Mr. President, items five through 10 are Building and Safety appeals of assessments, public hearing is required on these.
Okay, public hearing. Do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on items five through eight, or item number 10? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 15 through 20.
Items 15 through 20, public hearing have been held on these as well. Members wishing to call any specials? Item 20, call special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Items 15 through 20. I do have a card on item number 16, public hearing has been held, so unless there's a motion from the floor to reopen the public hearing, we're ready to proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourth with on 16. Next item?
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 32.
21 through 32 now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items, shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Specials? 31, call special by Mr. Holden.
Which one?
Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
The next items, Mr. President, 33 and 34 are closed sessions, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk.
Our next items would be on the continuation agenda, items 35 and 36, and public hearing has not been held on these items.
35 and 36 now before us, we do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items, shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on item 35 or 36, any specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
35 and 36 are approved. Does that bring us back to the specials, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Zine?
Ask to reconsider 35.
Into the microphone, please.
Mr. President, ask to reconsider 35.
Motion to reconsider item number 35 for purpose of discussion. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 35 is reconsidered, and we shall call it special, Ms. Zine.
Yes, call it special, please, thank you.
Does that bring us back to the specials, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, and the first special would be item number one.
Members, we have a series of special items called, we also have one presentation, this is not Friday, but Councilmember Galanter does have a presentation today, so let's do the presentation now, and while she comes to the podium, let me mention that item number two is an item where we expect a significant amount of both presentation from staff, the applicant, and amongst the council, so we will attempt to take the other special, non-closed session items first, we'll take item number two last before going into closed session. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I'm sorry to disrupt the normal routine here, but I did want you all to join me in saying farewell and thank you to Veronica Johnson of my staff, who has been offered a job with a much bigger salary. There can be no other reason why she would dream of leaving this place, and so she's leaving, and Friday will be her last day, and I unfortunately won't be here, so I did want, I know that you will want to join me in thanking Veronica, she's, ever since she's worked here, she's been one of those people we all wish we had more of. She knows where all the secrets are in all the departments that the Commerce Committee oversees, and if she doesn't know, she knows how to find out, and, but people in the departments don't relax, because she is being followed by a gentleman named John Howland, who is going to do the same thing. Veronica has been really invaluable to my staff. She came on, she came here from Washington, she's a Californian, but she had been working in Washington, and you know that often people who work for what they call higher levels of government come into local government a little bit skeptical. Veronica did not do that. She dove right in, and she has done really yeoman service for the Commerce Committee and for all of us by keeping everybody on their toes, and as you all know, we're very burdened, and we're spread over a million committees and a million constitu-, well, it feels like a million constituents, and so there, somebody's got to really mind the store for each of these committees, and I could not have asked for better help. She also can use commas correctly, something that is rare and wonderful these days, and we have spent many hours grumbling, swapping English major stories, and grumbling over things like commas in the wrong place. But she is moving on to make use of some of the issues and knowledge that she's gained here, she's going to be working on water policy issues for Southern California, and we should all be grateful that she is continuing to do that, we know we're in good hands. I'm sorry you're leaving, I know you're going to have a wonderful time, you're going to have forgotten us by next week, we have a bet on to see whether six months from now she can remember the names of the people at DWP, but, because I know they're going to work her justice hard in her next job, but Veronica, I did want to say thank you, it's been a pleasure having you, I wish you well, I know we'll still be in touch, because all these wa-, it's all the same water that we're talking about, and I hope you have a wonderful time at your next job, and don't forget us entirely, you're welcome to come back and chortle every once in a while, so we have the usual certificate, and my thanks.
And now's your chance.
Speech.
Anything you like.
I, I'd just like to-
Except not watching over your shoulder.
I'd like to thank everybody, not only for making me welcome to City Hall, but for Los Angeles, and, to Los Angeles, and it's been a real privilege to learn about LA from the inside and make it my new home, so, thanks.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden? On the presentation? I have your button.
Presentation?
No, 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 I have you requesting to speak here.
Ruth is leaving or something?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Your button must have been pressed inadvertently.
Inadvertently, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Madam Clerk, I think that brings us back to item number one.
Yes, Mr. President, and a Planning and Use Management Committee report has been submitted and distributed to all the council members.
Now, I do have cards submitted on this item, but I understand public hearing has been held in committee, I just want to ask our city attorney if that fulfills our requirement for a public hearing, if that does, then it will require a motion from the floor to reopen the public hearing. Public hearing has been held. We have to have, okay, so let's, before beginning the council discussion, proceed with the speakers on the item, members of the public, the council calls forward at this point Gerald, is it Go ahead, and I will make one comment before you begin, I know a public hearing has been held in committee, many of the speakers who were asking to speak today did get an opportunity to address the committee yesterday, so I ask that you keep your comments brief, and to the extent possible not be redundant or repetitive of comments that were made towards the committee yesterday, they are reflected in the committee report before us.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council, I just want to briefly touch on the matter that is before you. Number one, with respect to the two variances, the height variance with respect to the residence is one that's going to have a residence that's 56 feet in height, while I realize it has gone through a number of people, I want you to take a look at in terms of the height of this particular residence, if there's any such residences in the city of Los Angeles that has this height. Another thing, at the Plum Commission hearing yesterday, Councilman Bernson raised an issue that he requested an investigation with respect to the issuance of oak tree permits in the city of Los Angeles. In this particular instance, there was a public hearing in which at that hearing, the oak tree permit was only to be granted, subject to the approval of all permits. Despite the fact that that was stated in a public hearing, the oak tree permit was granted and oak trees were cut down. This was one of the issues of extreme importance to the members of Crowe and the neighborhood. Lastly, I do want to talk about the tennis court. The tennis court is on top of a parking garage structure that will house seven cars, while I realize that it is, the variance that is requested, the neighbor involved has given her approval, I still find that that is something that should be considered. Anyway, I thank the council for its indulgence, I do hope that this matter will at least cause this council in the future to take a look at how the oak tree permit is being handled. I know that the city attorney was requested to look into the enforcement of this permit, and I hope that the council will do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corstens?
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members, my name is Douglas P. Carstens, and I am an attorney with Chatton Brown and Associates, representing the concerned residents of Bel Air. We strongly oppose these variances, we understand the position of the council office and the recommendation from the Plum Committee, but we respectfully and strongly disagree with that. These are variances that should be denied, there are no special circumstances with this property sufficient to differentiate it from others in the area, it's a hilly area, and this, this property is typical. These variances would also be detrimental to the public welfare and injurious to adjacent properties. There's been reports that have pointed out how this could be beneficial in some ways to people from viewing the property from the street, it's detrimental to others nearby on the other side of the property, and we will hear more about that from the people themselves. We were assured or heard yesterday that all who could see this 56-foot wall, this five-story house, were in support of it, that is patently not true, and we will hear that there are people still opposed to this. We remind the council that these variances are not necessary, these hardships are self-imposed, and we strongly request that these variances be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joanna Carson, to be followed by Darlene Bonifacio, Ingrid, is it Agar, Agar, and John Colomaris.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I am Joanna Carson, and I am the neighbor who is impacted the most by this project. I not only speak for myself today, but for other neighbors who couldn't be present because of other commitments and are out of the state or out of the country. We probably all know where this decision is headed, but we felt, and I'm speaking for all of us, that our voices needed to be heard on this issue. We have been working on this for a year and a half, a 56-foot variance in our serene neighborhood, the jewel called Bel Air, is being overbuilt, another parking structure with a tennis court on top with 14 automobiles in it, is something that should have never been planned, it could have been redone, it wasn't redone. Our voices need to be heard before you, because I do a lot of work in this city, and I love this city very much, and I just feel in this issue that we have come up and up against a lot of council meetings, et cetera, and we just feel that our voices maybe haven't been heard, or we've been overpowered by the political force, but in essence, we just need to know and hope that this variance in this particular area, where any other house is between 5,000 and 11,000 feet, we now have a 20,000-foot structure with a 5,000-foot adjoining structure with a tennis court on top. I urge you to consider this, our voices want to be heard, I love this city very much, I love this building that we all are in at the moment, and I just had to- I love this building that we all are in at the moment, and I just had to come here to express the feelings of all of the neighbors who have been fighting so hard, and I just hope that the city doesn't let us down. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holden?
I just, I recognize Ms. Joanna Carson, and she was over at the Jack Webb fundraiser for LAPD officers, and very, very, very active in our community. I welcome you to City Hall, Ms. Carson. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Continuing with our public hearing.
Hello, my name is Darlene Bonifacio. Good morning to gentlemen and gentle ladies. I'm here, kind of like on a deja vu matter. I was here once before, regards to the Benedict Canyon Association with Jack Lemon. And this is an issue that's been before you with the Benedict Canyon Association regarding the variances, the topography, and it's just almost, you know, with all due respect, it's something that you've already ruled on, and there's already -- your rulings are already standing. So I urge this committee to really take this on submission and look at what your own findings were regarding the variances, the topography, your basing your decisions. You know, I really don't feel anybody's listening to me here. This is a very serious issue before this body, and there are laws in effect, and eventually it will, it will come up. And I plead to this body to examine what's happening to our trees and our community and the overbuilding. I know there's Sandy McGallas and Bob Cohen with the Benedict Canyon Association you can contact, and I'd be happy to supply you with their numbers in regards to the variances and the topography. I don't want to belabor the issue. I know the attorneys for Mrs. Carson already stated what they are, and I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ingrid Egger. I live on Beverly Glen, approximately 500 feet due southeast of the Brody property. My husband and I have lived there since 1974, and we frequently have taken strolls or hikes up the narrow roads of St. Pierre, St. Cloud, over the Charming Neams Bridge, which is city property, with a lovely view down into the prior existing ravine. When we heard in 2000 that this ravine was going to be demolished because of the extensive Brody project, a group of neighbors, of the immediate neighborhood, got together. Now, I must tell you, it is pretty rare in Bel Air that you have a lot of contact with your adjoining neighbors because of the way the properties go. You cannot just walk across the lawn and so forth. However, in talking to other neighbors around this immediate property, we were really astounded how universal and how great the feeling was about neighbors as far as preserving the ravine. And that, of course, gave impetus to our contacting the various cities' agencies in trying to preserve this ravine. As you all know, we have really been rebuffed at every turn of events which we have taken, starting with about a year and a half ago, when apparently some of our residents appeared before the city council, and so on. Our prior city councilman, Mr. Fur, also ruled against us. He found that the Brodys were very nice people, and he wanted them to have their dream house. Well, that's all very nicely said, but we don't want to engage in a popularity contest. We have been solely interested in preserving the ravine. The ravine, of course, is gone at this point. It is, it has been denuded by trees. It is supposed to be filled by about 7,000 square foot, feet, or cubic feet, rather, although we haven't seen any substantiating drawings for that. They have not been made available to us nor the city planning department, apparently. And as such, of course, we are, we have been greatly disappointed that we have not had had a meaningful impact on our various elected city officials or appointed officials.
Thank you.
I was, by the way, I attended yesterday's meetings, and somehow my card got misplaced. I didn't have a chance to talk yesterday. Can I get another minute or two?
Okay, but if I can ask you to conclude.
Because I do want to address the variances. The variances that were sought by the Brody family were because of the excessive height for the main building. The main residence is supposed to be 20,000-plus square feet. Your present regulations allow 36, a height of 36 feet on a piece of property. We photographed, made a photograph, which I think is very illuminating, by taking a balloon at street level, raising it up 36 feet over the existing house, I'm sorry, which was built by the previous owners in the '60s. As you can see, the balloon, which then designates the established height, is substantially above the existing old house, which is going to be raised, of course. But it also is raised substantially above the adjoining property, Mrs. Carson's property, as well as any other structure in the area. There isn't a single structure in the area presently, in the immediate area, that has a 36-feet height. And I beg to differ severely with Mr. Brody's representative yesterday, who tried to insinuate that there were variances in the city that had been granted above to substantiate his 56-feet variance. As a matter of fact, he even alleged that there was one variant of 100.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to conclude, please.
Hmm?
I'm going to ask you to conclude now, please.
Yeah, okay. So we do severely, but the other major issue is the issues, not so much of the tennis court, but the underlying structure. The underlying structure is a building of slightly less than 6,000 square feet. It is built, supposed to be built very closely to the existing structure, residence. It is allegedly to be used for antique cars. Now, Mrs. Rogers, in her, in her opinion, of course, voided that. Still and all, we need to know what is going to actually happen to a 6,000...
Thank you very much. We have other speakers waiting to be heard.
Okay.
Appreciate you being here.
But we do seriously, we consider this a serious matter, Councilman. We do not have the support of anybody at this point. We, you are our elected officials.
Thank you. Mr. John Calamaris, to be followed by Linda Kerr.
Anybody want to have these?
John Calamaris, to be followed by Linda Kerr, Bill Delvack, and Bradley Midlin.
My name is John Calamaris, and I live at 498 St. Pierre Road, and I have been there for 30 years. We've gone full cycle. We were here August 15th of 2001 on a similar issue, certainly involved with the, with the Brody affair at 440 St. Cloud Road. But the issue today is about variance, and 56-feet height itself is five and a half stories. 36 feet is three and a half stories. The Brodys are intending to bring in a Fifth Mansion transplant into Bel Air. The Fifth Mansion sits on 88 acres, heavily wooded acres. This house will sit on 1.75 acres. We vehemently oppose the variance issue. Three and a half stories and five and a half stories are simply much too much for any residential area. But I must add, our primary concern was to save the oak trees, actually to save the ravine and other trees in there. At this location existed a beautiful ravine filled with mature California oak trees, wild black walnuts, a few pines, other Florida fauna. It was also a major runoff channel for the hills above. I'm speaking in the past tense, because today this is all gone. It's almost now totally denuded. On November 8th, 2001, one day after the West Los Angeles Planning Commission hearing, a violation of nature occurred at 440 St. Cloud. Approximately 25 trees were slaughtered. 12 were mature California oaks. Later, fill was imported. This ravine no longer exists. The area now looks like a war zone. My question again, is this construction or destruction? As I stated earlier, our purpose is primarily an eco-environmental issue. We feel the city government has let us down. Five trees, four oaks, and one Douglas fir are boxed for transplanting. At this very moment, three of those oak trees are dead. The other two are dying. The environmental issue was never properly addressed by the city government. And now, of course, within our own city limits, we're looking for pocket parks. This doesn't make sense to me. There is no logic.
Thank you.
The...
If I can ask you to conclude soon, please.
Just one second. And now the issue is the variance, three and a half stories, five and a half stories. We definitely oppose it. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time. We do have staff here for the council discussion and debate. Linda Kerr is the next speaker, to be followed by Bill Delvack and Bradley Midlin.
Good morning, Your Honor and people of the court. My name is Linda Kerr. I'm from Los Angeles, California, and I'm here as a concerned citizen. I understand clearly that the oak trees, 12 of them that have been removed, they say have been placed somewhere else, but I still don't know where they're placed. I would like to know where the trees have been placed and if they're still living. The reason for that is they do supply oxygen to the air. We have a rare amount of trees left, and these trees, it is against the law to cut down. Now, taxpayers paid to have this law put in action. So now, why are we just putting it to the side and not even caring about what we paid our taxes for? If we're going to cut down these trees and not have to prove whether or not we need permits, did we really have a permit to do this? And where were they placed? That's what I, I'm here for, as a, as a person wanting to know where they placed the oak trees.
Okay. Thank you very much, and in the staff presentation, we'll try to get an answer to that question. Bill Delvack and Bradley Midlin?
Honorable members of the council, Bill Delvack, on behalf of the applicants, the Brodys. You have before you an appeal of two very simple and straightforward variances. As the zoning administrator approved the variance, the Area Planning Commission denied the appeal, and Plum also recommended denial, we urge the council to deny these, this appeal on these variances for several very basic reasons. First and foremost, the house is not, as has been represented, a five-and-a-half-story house. It's a two-story house over a basement. The reason for the height variance is due to the topography of the site. There is a slope at the rear. Interestingly, the three property owners immediately adjoining at the rear, who are able to see the 56-foot height, which will actually be 50 feet after finished grade, all have supported this application. Neighbors who don't see the height are here appealing before you. It was also said that this is the highest house in the neighborhood. That's just flatly not true. There's a height variance nearby of 105 feet, also due to topography, that was approved. There are 19 houses in the neighborhood that are over 36 feet. The house is placed away from the street in order to maintain a setback to allow neighbors across the street on a small street to not have the house immediately adjacent. That requires the topography and the height variance. Also, it's been said the house is oversized. There are 26 homes in this neighborhood that are this large or larger, including many substantially larger. So what you have before you, members, is a very simple, two variances. The Area Planning Commission, the zoning administrator, and Plum all recommended approval of the project and denial of the appeals, and we urge you to join with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bradley Midlin?
Mr. President, your honor, council members, my name is Brad Midlin, M-I-N-D-L-I-N. I'm here in support of the Brody's home. Couple of things that I've heard today that I want to make comment on. First of all, I believe the ratio of new trees coming are three to one. That's very important. The Brodys are putting more trees than they're taking out in the premises. Also, in your file, I believe you have letters of approval of the home. The neighbors, the close neighbors of the Brodys, support them building this home. That's very, very important. Also important must, a clarification must be made, that in front of this council today is not the oak tree permit. The Brodys did everything they were supposed to do with the oak trees. They followed the law, and with respect to yesterday, which I was at the Plum Committee, Councilman Bernson did bring up some issues, but not directed towards the Brodys, towards the following of the law itself and other circumstances. Again, the Brodys follow the law perfectly. I'm not going to bring up any other of the issues with topography. That has already been said. This is a two-story house with a basement. Again, I want to say I support the Brody's home. I think it should be approved, and I believe that everybody has been heard here, and I do thank you for listening to me and everybody else. And again, I support the Brody's home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number one. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I'd first defer to the Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes, if I might.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Jack Weiss. The Plum Committee recommended denial of the appeal and to sustain the action of the APC and the zoning administrator's approval. I need to share with you that the applicant has willingly come forward and added to the ratio of replacement of oak trees, from two to one to three to one. So the trees that you have heard that have been demolished will be replaced, and if not, the number will be increased. Also, under Councilman Bernson's review of the case yesterday, we added conditions that would essentially restrict the level of noise to certain hours to make sure that the noise factor from the tennis courts aren't impacting the surrounding area. And further, we checked with the city attorney's office to make sure that the oak tree permits were issued legally, and it was confirmed that the oak tree permits were issued legally. So many of the issues that were brought up, we looked at very carefully. We deliberated. We heard the public hearing, and we still ended up with the same conclusion, that we recommend denial of the appeal and sustain the action of the APC and the zoning administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This is a contentious issue in my district. There are emotions and arguments on both sides here, but I do want to commend my colleague, Mr. Reyes, and my colleague, Mr. Bernson, for the careful consideration they gave to this matter yesterday at Plum Committee. As Mr. Reyes told you, they added certain conditions at committee as well yesterday, and they really looked at the whole gamut of issues here, and there are several, and it is a complicated matter. Nonetheless, this is a matter that went through various stages of the city before it got to us. It went through the zoning appeals, zoning administrator process, the APC, it's been to Plum. They've also had a separate hearing before the Public Works Commission. And although I, because I know many of the people from my district who are here today and have had the chance to talk with them about this issue, and I understand the concerns, and I have personally been to the site, members of my staff have been to the site as recently as last week, I do believe that the report that Mr. Bernson and Mr. Reyes have presented before us today is the proper outcome and the proper balancing of all the interests here, and I urge your approval of it as well. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Holden?
This reminds me of the Ambassador Hotel site. Does it remind you of that, Mr. Weiss?
Is he building a school here, too?
If you were building a school, you want mixed use, I'd go along with you. But in a situation like this, Mr. Weiss, nothing against you, I like you, you know that. The fact of the matter is that you have very prominent and important people, answer that, on both sides of this issue. Am I right? You know that. You're, it's a tough call for you. You're, it's a tough call for you, and each of us, from time to time, have to make these kind of tough calls. But at the same time, we want people who come all the way down here to know that someone is listening, and they listen to you, and you, you are listening, and I'm listening as well. And some of these people, I got to tell you, are very, 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 very prominent, and they've taken time from a very, very, very busy schedule that I've known and I've trusted over the years for their judgment. And that, so no matter how I vote on this, that doesn't mean I'm against you at all. It just means that I'm just trying to make peace. Okay, Mr. Weiss? Thank you, Mr. Weiss. You watch the board.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on item number one? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That matter is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 20, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 20.
I'm speaking right now. I say call, I mean, I'm just... Hold on. Hold on.
Mr. Holden? If I can ask you to press your button, please.
Mr. President, members, I think that this is an important issue, and we should have the CLA and, of course, Ms. Miskowski, whose committee this came from, and this directly tells us what, how, whether or not we're in compliance with the consent decree. And it's really so important that we should discuss it, and that's why I called a special, Mr. President, to get all the facts on the table, so we talk about senior leads, how we're going to comply, et cetera, et cetera. The police department should be here, sitting at the table as well. Mr. Deaton, would you, front and center? The police department, front and center, and Ms. Miskowski, as you were. And, Mr. President, would you hold my time while they speak?
Just give us a report. Just be fine with this. Just give me one second. This is a report from the LAPD relative to Special Order 42, which basically is complying with a provision of the consent decree, paragraph 70 and 73, requiring the, a supervisor to ask and determine the health of any person that we incarcerate.
Right. Commander Kanek from Police Department Administrative Group. The consent decree requires that the watch commander interview each arrestee as to injuries, complaints, those types of things. There was no recordation of that interview, per se. The monitor asked for a trail that could be audited. Special Order 42 includes that provision, which basically says when you sign the booking approval, you're also saying that you've done that interview. So that gives a paper trail for auditing purposes. It was being done. It just formalized the trail. I'm sorry, sir.
Bottom line is that we had done this. We had not had in place a way of recording it. This provides for the acknowledgement of this. It was at the request of the monitor so that there'd be a monitoring trail to ensure that we are complying with this. This takes care of this. This is what we reported to the court on this and several other items.
I would point out, our interviewing arrestee requirement precedes the consent decree. That's a requirement we established back in 2000. And hence, it was a requirement in the consent decree that we continue to do what we're doing.
Mr. Holden, still on your time?
There's, there's no report on item 20. We're going to note and file.
All is required, well, all is necessary in this instance is that the police department indicated that they had done it, were noting and filing that we've done it, we've included...
On what? There's no report.
We have special order that, in fact, requires the supervisor, the watch commander, to interview and make note of the condition of arrestees or any complaints arrestees have.
Ms. Miskowski is going to answer a question also.
The special order is only the documentation of that. We had, there was an order to do that beforehand. This is a...
Order to do what? Do that. What you mean, that? Ms. Miskowski, you the chairperson of the committee?
Yes.
Would you help these people out?
I think if you had listened to them, Mr. Holden, you would have heard what they had said. There was a special order...
I'm really hearing from you. Go ahead.
There's a special order. The consent decree requires visual inspection of detainees or arrestees for injuries. When people are arrested, the watch commander or a person, a supervisor not involved in the arrest, must participate, must look at them and make sure, ask them, have they been harmed? Is this fine? Are they okay? There was a special order, number 13, which had been previously approved, and there's now a clarification on that, Special Order Number 42, which clarifies how supervisors and watch commanders are supposed to look at detainees or arrestees who have been brought in. This was adopted by the police commission, as proposed by the police department. These are now the procedures that they're following. They clarify and are consistent with and enforcing the consent decree, two different paragraphs, 70 and 73, which talk about how this must be done as people are booked and make sure that they're compliant, that they have been reviewed, talked to by supervisors who were involved in the arrest, to make sure that they have no complaints.
Who initiated the corrective action? I mean, this...
The police department issued all of the corrective action pursuant to the implementation of these consent decree paragraphs.
All right, Mr. President. Members, Mr. Deaton?
I just like the, we were, the police department was doing the, having the watch commander do this interview prior to the consent decree. This order subsequent to the consent decree is merely the documentation, so the monitor has the ability to, in fact, ensure that we're doing what we said we are doing. So all this is about is documentation of a process that we had in place before the consent decree.
And if I can just add, when Mr. Holden said there isn't a report, normally, although this is just noting and filing, and it's one page, it's a committee report, attached to the committee is the letter from the chief of police and the action by the department and the commission in approving all this. So there is additional material that is attached to our committee report that you could look at, which is the police department's documentation and the police commission's record of this information.
Well, then, my staff didn't provide it for me, but thank you for the information. We'll get it, you know, after the meeting. But I will say this, I'm satisfied that with this report, that we should note, file, make note of the fact that the corrective actions are in place, initiated by the police department and signed off by the police commission. It tells me, I guess, that they're working together, Mrs. Zion. I don't know. That's what it sounds like. And they are making this, all this happen, to be in compliance. This is one way of evaluating the performance of the department or whoever heads that department, whether it be the commission, whomever else. But you happy with it, Mr. Deaton?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Well, then, we'll, I'll vote to note and file.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Miskowski, did you wish to be heard again? Other members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, receiving and filing the report. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items 21, 22, and 23 were adopted earlier. However, they are, do have ordinances on the files, and 11 council members were present at the time. Do you wish to reconsider those for another vote?
Sure, let's reconsider now that we have 12 members present. Please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, let's reopen the roll on ordinances, items number 21, 22, and 23. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those being ordinances are now approved. Next item, please.
Item number 31, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? If I can ask you to press your button again? Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski? Police Department, front and center, please. On 31.
Item 31, it's a note and file. We, as indicated, the council has already approved this MOU. It was subsequently approved by the police commission, sent back to us. This would be just duplicative of what we've already done.
It has to do with the work, flexible work schedule.
That is correct. However, the MOU has already been approved by the council. Subsequent to its approval by the council, police commission approved it and sent it to us, and there's nothing to do today. The criteria and other things that the council requested has been passed on by the police commission and being sent to the council. I understand the public safety committee will be considering that at their next meeting. So there's no, this is note and file. This has just already happened, and there's, done this.
Ms. Miskowski?
Been there, done this.
Anything you want to add to this?
No, other than to reinforce, and this is something that was already done, it's just a file catching up in terms of being submitted back by the planning commission, excuse me, the police commission. But the important thing is, on the flexible work schedule, just yesterday, the police commission did approve some criteria under which the flexible work schedule should be reviewed after it's really been in place and we've had a chance to measure it. And that criteria, before the program is over, will be brought to the council by way of the committee in the next couple of weeks, so that we will know what we will be looking for and what kind of measure of criteria we will have in place, so that as we look at this after six months, after a year, we'll be able to see, has it been successful? Is it meeting the criteria that we are setting in place? But that's not what's before us today. That's just giving you an update regarding this matter as to what the council had previously asked, that has come through the commission just yesterday, and will be in committee and council in the next few weeks.
An additional question, but, Mr. President, we approved the flexible work schedule sometimes early on. Since then, we've had a hiring freeze. Flexible work schedule is going to be somewhat affected by the hiring freeze as relates to the personnel being...
Hiring freeze doesn't affect sworn patrol officers. Hiring freeze does not affect them.
Anybody in the field...
But if they get an increase in pay, say, for example, the senior leads are going to have to go get more money. It's not just...
So long as they're in the field, they're...
They're not in the field. They're going to be in somebody's living room, and the fact of the matter is that that's what they're talking about, and that they will be affected. Hire is the, if at all. The senior leads will be affected, which is new proposal before us, or will be soon.
Right. I don't, I don't believe that the, Mr. Holden, I don't believe the hiring freeze nor the rest work schedule, either one affects the senior lead officers.
Now, what about the, don't they get a little bit more money?
They do, but they're exempt, but they're exempt, they're field officers. They're in the field.
They're not...
Living rooms are field, not offices. And they're not...
By definition.
By definition.
All right.
And therefore, they're exempt from the hiring freeze.
Look, you tell me they're not, if they're not affected, then fine, we go for it.
Right. If somebody tells you, tell them to call me.
There's no reason then to, to hold up this, this implementation of the senior lead officers' program?
Now, can I know of it?
Okay. What did you say about it?
We were directed by the commission yesterday to review the proposal on the senior lead officer revision. We'll be preparing that report to the commission within the next 30 days. Currently, senior lead officers are not under the flexible work schedule.
They're what?
They're not under the flexible work schedule.
They're not under the flexible work schedule.
They are addressed by a separate MOU. We've offered to sit down with the league twice and discuss that. They have not yet come to the table on that.
Well, if they're not under the flexible work schedule, are they, are we permitted then to, to hire more with the hiring freeze? Are you affected at all?
Yes, sir. We can hire more. They're just on 5/8.
All right. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 31 is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 35, called special by Councilmember Zion, and there is an amending motion.
Mr. Zion? Mr. Zion? Item number 35.
President, colleagues, we have an amendment that the author of the motion is agreed to. I think it's circulating somewhere.
It's been distributed.
It's being distributed, and I'd just like to have that part of the record and have the amendment included.
Can you describe the amendment for us, please? Is it technical in nature?
It's technical in nature, Mr. President. It's regarding TNA and regarding the Guadalupe Center in my district.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, did you wish to be heard on item 35? On item 35? No? Okay. Then, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on 35A. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's now open the roll on item number 35, as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 35 is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Do you wish to take public comment on items not on the agenda?
Sure. We have one request from members of the public to be heard to address the council, items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time. Mark Freeman.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. Here, representing LA LINK, the Los Angeles Regional Tobacco Control Committee linkage project, and our various constituents and members of our coalition, who are in the back of the room with me here today. We've been here before on this issue, but we just want to come and raise it again. We have heard recently that there are budget proposals to essentially remove funding from the tobacco enforcement program within the city of Los Angeles. And we, first of all, question whether MSA funds, what the proper usage of those funds should be, and whether they should be allocated somewhat towards tobacco enforcement programs. And we wanted to raise the issue because, obviously, it's a little premature in terms of the budget cycle, but we know that it's important to raise these issues early. We would ask that you support moves to ensure that the tobacco enforcement program and tobacco enforcement projects are funded properly within the coming years. So generally, we appreciate support that you've been given, and the danger of not funding the tobacco enforcement program is to essentially underfund retail licensing program within the city of Los Angeles, as well as other tobacco enforcement programs. So in the coming months, we hope that you pay attention to this issue very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's, for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number two is on the desk.
Okay. Item number two, an item notice for public hearing, and we do have a number of cards from members of the public wishing to be heard on this item. We also have a presentation from the applicant or petitioner. We have a staff presentation, and we have Mr. Zion requesting lengthy consideration of the item. Mr. Zion, did you wish to say a few words, or should we proceed directly into public comment?
A few and colleagues. We have before us today a request for an exemption filed by Dino's Victory Roadhouse. This request involves a specific adult entertainment establishment in the third council district, which is less than 500 feet from a residential zoned area. This item will have citywide implications in all council districts. Appropriate notice has been published and mailed by the city clerk, so that we may proceed with a public hearing regarding this situation. I would like to request that staff from the city attorney's office, the zoning administration, and the Los Angeles Police Department vice unit come forward to make presentations. I would also like to request that the applicant for the exemption be allowed 30 minutes for presentation, rebuttal, and any public comment in support of the exception. Thank you, and I want to thank my staff for the work that they completed on this project, along with the city attorney and the planning department, and we can then proceed with the deputy city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Zion.
And if I could also have LAPD join up at the table? The LAPD vice personnel?
So let's begin calling the members of the public forward.
Thank you.
And that way, any questions or concerns raised by members of the public can be incorporated into the city's presentation. At this point in time, the council calls forward Mr. Don Goodman, to be followed by Lois Krieger and Virginia Ingram and Leonard Schaefer. There's quite a few cards, so if you can begin to line up here behind the microphone.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Don Goodman. I own the property called Alley in the Valley, which is approximately 150 feet south of Oxnard Boulevard. The Frisky Kitty, which is the establishment we're talking about, is on Oxnard. The Frisky Kitty, which is the establishment we're talking about, is on Oxnard with an opening in Oxnard Boulevard, and when you turn up that alleyway, you enter the Alley in the Valley. One of the problems, in fact, many problems we have had since this establishment has taken hold, is that on my property, because we have a parking problem, I have a ballet service which goes five to six hours a day. And my attendants have to stand back and watch the parking, because the Frisky Kitty, their employees and their patrons attempt to park on my property. One of the problems is that my attendants therefore have to ask them to leave, and we've had to do, often do this, have to do this almost every single day. I have been at the property and have asked the patrons and employees to leave, and on several occasions, the female employees who have been asked to leave my parking lot have cursed me in the foulest language you can possibly imagine. It has happened several times. My tenants have complained on numerous occasions that those who have parked in my property without us seeing them have been rowdy and disrespectful to them. This is a shopping center of where, for retail outlet for women's clothing. I have gone past the establishment, the Frisky Kitty, at night to look at my property and have found on numerous occasions dozens of men who have been outside the establishment drinking. Since this establishment has come forth, I have, my, I have found and my cleanup crew has found condoms and beer bottles scattered all over the property. The Frisky Kitty has not got one parking place to their name, not one. When you enter the alleyway, there have been numerous times where their employees and their patrons have parked in the alleyway, blocking the alleyway, which is a fire access road, which if there was a fire, it prevent the fire department from reaching my property. As has been noted by Councilman Zine, this Frisky Kitty is within 500 feet of a residential area. The last occasion we have had, the girls there, this is a totally nude bar, the girls have gone out in their skimpy outfits and actually had catfights in the alleyway. This is not the type of business which belongs in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, if I can also take a moment to remind us all that, as Ms. Zikowski explained the last time, this issue was before us. We're not only required to hear the members of the public, we're required to listen to members of the public.
Point of information, very briefly, I just wanted to state for the record, I know we're being taped, and that I may occasionally be looking down, but I'm looking at papers for this item. Wanted to make that very clear.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Let's continue. Ms. Lois Krieger, to be followed by Virginia Ingram and Leonard Schaefer.
Good morning, council members. My name is Lois Krieger, and I'm here representing Unilab Corporation. We employ roughly 1,000 people in the Tarzana area, along Oxnard, one of the buildings immediately adjacent to the Frisky Kitty. I won't go into specific detail as to recover what Mr. Goodman talked about in terms of blocking the fire access lane. We have encountered similar problems. It also creates a hazard when our employees are trying to exit the parking lot and turn out into Oxnard, because they're forced to go into oncoming traffic. We have had additional problems with patrons of the bar scaling the walls of our parking lot. One employee who was working late at night came out to find one of the patrons attempting to break into her car. We have experienced similar problems with the beer bottles and the trash. And I also wanted to bring to the city council's attention that during these proceedings, and when they were previously heard, there were numerous promises made on the part of the owner of supervision and managing and security, and none of that is apparent here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Virginia Ingram, Leonard Schaefer, and Max Amati.
Good morning, council members. My name is Virginia Ingram, and I'm the vice president and director of human resources for Unilab Corporation. As my coworker has previously summarized, and I'll be very brief, one of my major duties is to recruit for the company that I work for, and I've had many candidates decline the interview because of our location next to the Frisky Kitty. So I've not even had an opportunity to interview candidates, because our candidates would not even show up for the interview. I would second the motion of the previous two speakers in terms of the safety issue. I've often wondered where or if there is a manager on duty. I absolutely witnessed the catfight, as was described by the first presenter, and I have to tell you, no one from that establishment came out to intervene. The language that was used by the two women was unbelievable, and I'm not a naive person, but I just stopped to think that if I were in the mode of recruiting, again, I would have lost candidates and would not have been able to do my job. So I would certainly, I certainly appreciate the opportunity for you to listen, and I would certainly hope that you would take our recommendation into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leonard Schaefer, to be followed by Max Amati and Roger John Diamond.
Good morning, President Padilla, members of the council. I'm Leonard Schaefer, I'm first vice president of the Tarzana Property Owners Association. We are here to oppose the exception sought by the applicant. I believe that the council will hear from the zoning administrator and the city attorney that alternate sites have been found as per the appellate court decision. However, we know that this council still has the right, if it so desires, to exercise its discretion and grant an exception. I would cite four reasons why this council should not grant an exception. It has been pointed out that there is no adequate parking. The bar shares five spaces with an auto business on the same location. This might have been fine when it was a bar with evening hours. As it stands now, the hours are lunchtime, after work, and into the evening. Much more business is there. The parking that was on the north side of Oxnard Boulevard has now been restricted. There is no further parking that can be used on the north side of Oxnard Boulevard. The appropriateness of the site, it is not appropriate for this particular business due to the other small businesses, family-oriented businesses within the area. We've heard from the Alley of the Valley, we also have a Baskin Robbins and other small family-oriented businesses there. The next is a probable vice and crime problem. The nude bar, the Frisky Kitty as it's now known, cannot serve alcohol. As we've been told, people have been seen drinking beer, and beer bottles have been found in the morning, indicating that probably the patrons, since they can't get alcohol inside the location, are outside drinking in violation of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. Further, although it may be a leap, I would say that the used condoms in the parking area indicate that some type of illegal activity such as prostitution may also be occurring. I know that some council members are wondering, could that be true? But I would have to say, from my experiences, 35 years as a prosecutor in the county of Los Angeles, that the circumstantial evidence is pretty strong here. Based on those, the Tarzana Property Owners Association is urging this council to deny the exception and to tell the applicant that the other sites that are available are more appropriate, and if he wants to open his nude bar, to which we have no objection, by the way, to nude bars themselves, only where they may be located, that a better area is available for him to open his nude bar. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Mr. Max Amati, to be followed by Roger John Diamond and Dean Gettleson.
We're part of the application, so do you want to hear us at a separate time? I was told we had 30 minutes, as opposed to...
Yes, actually.
So we'll speak later?
At the end of the public comment.
Thank you.
Okay?
That goes for the other people who also signed up, they're also supporting him.
Roger John Diamond, Dean Gettleson, Mayor Shahar, and Jamal Hadad. Everybody together in that?
Yes.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then that concludes public comment on item number two. We should then proceed to, Mr. Zine, what is your desire, to have the staff present first, or the petitioner present first?
I'd like to have the staff first, Mr. President.
Okay, let's hear first from our city staff then, there's various departments and agencies.
Could we be able to see the stuff that's being shown to you, so we can rebut it? We can't see it from the podium.
Yes, we'll ask for help from staff during the course of the presentation to make sure the visuals are not only visible to the members of the council, but to members of the public as well.
Can we do it on the monitor, Mr. President?
We can try to do that. ITA will do the best job they can. Okay, so we'll have a staff, we'll hear from staff first, and we are reserving a 30-minute time period for a presentation from the petitioner. Go ahead.
Mr. President, good morning, members of council, good morning. My name is John Cotty, and I'm a deputy city attorney handling the litigation involving Dino's Victory Roadhouse versus the city of Los Angeles. Today on the agenda, you must reconsider the applicant's...
Hold on, we're trying to cue the cameras here for the visuals.
I see my face on the screen.
There you go.
I now have my 15 minutes. Again, good morning, members of council, Mr. President. I am the city attorney in charge of handling the litigation involving Dino's Victory Roadhouse versus the city of Los Angeles. Pursuant to a court order, this council must reconsider its December 15, 1999 exception request of applicant Dino's Victory Roadhouse and Dean Gettleson. You may remember in December of 1999, this council denied an exception for an adult entertainment establishment to be located within 300 feet of a residential zone. Pursuant to that request, this council made findings detailing where in the city a site is otherwise reasonably available. Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 1222, requires that finding. The, at the conclusion of the council's meeting, Mr. Roger John Diamond, on behalf of the applicant, challenged that decision in the Superior Court. The Superior Court ruled that our findings were not supported by substantial evidence because they didn't detail a specific site on which the petitioner could relocate his business. We, the city attorney's office, appealed that decision, and the Court of Appeal reversed holding that we did not have to, in fact, locate a specific site, but could point to neighborhoods, blocks, or other areas of the city possessing the defining characteristics of Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 1270C, the adult entertainment ordinance. However, the Court of Appeals did rule that our decision, the city council's December decision, was not supported by substantial evidence, because it didn't detail where they could relocate this business. Therefore, today, you must reconsider that application and determine whether or not there is evidence in the record of whether there are reasonable, reasonably available alternative sites that the applicant can relocate his business. Therefore, if you deny the request, you must make findings demonstrating that there are sites reasonably available. More specifically, you must make four findings. Those findings are that the proposed use as an adult entertainment business is consistent with all the applicable zoning regulations, including 1270C. It must be available for use, purchase, and rental as an adult entertainment business. It must have adequate street access, lighting, and sidewalks, and it must be at least 500 feet away from uses which may become obnoxious or offensive by reason of odor, dust, smoke, noise, or fumes. There has also been a request by Mr. Diamond that this matter be heard before the zoning administrator. When the, this action was, when the action was filed, the Superior Court ordered the city to reconsider its action. In doing so, they challenged a city council decision, and therefore, it is the city council that must reconsider this application. Furthermore, Mr. Diamond, on behalf of the applicant, has raised before the United States Supreme Court, does the city violate the First Amendment when it erroneously denies a permit for expressive activity and then holds successive hearings for the same permit? Therefore, it makes sense that this city council conduct this hearing. Mr. Diamond has also stated in the letter to me dated January 29th, that is in his packet, it says, "I have no objection to the city council conducting the hearing itself, provided it conducts a proper hearing." Therefore, it's appropriate for the zoning administrator to make his presentation at this time, and for this council to act on that, on the request here today.
Good morning, Commissioner, Council President, and members of the city council. My name is Daniel Green. I'm the zoning administrator that made the underlying decision. I wanted to update you on what we've done in the interim. Pursuant to Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 1222A20, an applicant may file an exception from the adult entertainment regulations set forth in Section 1270 of the code alleging that there are no, quote, "reasonably available," end quote, sites where such business can locate as a matter of right. I deny the appellant's request to establish an adult entertainment use in which females would dance topless at a facility then known as Dino's Victory Roadhouse, located at 18454 Oxnard Street in Tarzana. The Board of Zoning Appeals denied the applicant's appeal of that action, and the city council also denied the applicant's appeal of the BZA action. In response to the court action described by Mr. Cotty, staff investigated four geographic areas where the requested use is permitted by right with respect to zoning regulations, and has prepared for each such area aerial photographs, ground-level photographs of a small portion of each area, and maps displaying current zoning classifications. A site is defined in the ordinance as being, quote, "reasonably available," end quote, if it satisfies four criteria. I will now identify each of those criteria and briefly provide the evidence as to how the criteria are met. Number one, its use as the proposed adult entertainment business is consistent with all applicable zoning regulations, including Section 1270C of the Municipal Code. The Municipal Code requires that the proposed use be located within the C2, C5, M1, M2, or M3 zones. The areas shaded in gray on the 11-by-17 maps that you have represent properties in those zones. The scale in the maps indicates that a considerable amount of acreage is available, which is more than 500 feet from any agricultural or residential zone, religious institution, or public park. Most of the properties within the four geographic areas are beyond the required 1,000-foot minimum distance to another adult entertainment business. Finding number two, it is available for use, purchase, or rental as an adult entertainment business. Each of the 11-by-17 maps that you have includes ground-level photographs showing the existence of real estate signs advertising the availability of at least one property. The photographs associated with map number four on a separate document. All of the photographs were taken within the past three weeks. As the real estate market is fluid, there will be new properties continuously entering the market. Finding number three, it has adequate street access, street lighting, and sidewalks. The photographs accompanying the 11-by-17 maps show the existence of streetlights, sidewalks, and access on public streets for at least one location in each of the four selected areas. These photographs are typical of many other locations within each of those four areas. The aerial photographs also confirm the existence of public access and the desirability of the area, as evidenced by the number of parked vehicles in and around many of the buildings. These photographs also indicate the presence of curbside parking in a generally attractive setting, including street trees and landscaping on private property. The fourth of the four findings states it is at least 500 feet away from any uses which are or may become obnoxious or offensive by reason of odor, dust, smoke, noise, gas, fumes, cinders, refuse matter, or water-carried waste. None of these obnoxious features were noted in staff field reconnaissance. For example, none of the areas selected abut a landfill or a sewage treatment plant or any other known hazardous site. Properties near the Burbank Airport are, for the most part, fully developed, indicating that they are generally desirable business locations. In conclusion, based upon the additional data collection, the above-described background and findings should provide a solid foundation for the city's position that sites are reasonably available to accommodate the adult entertainment use sought by the applicant, without the necessity for the city to grant an exception from Section 1270 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code.
Other representatives of departments or the city wishing to add to the presentation thus Representative of the Police Department wish to add anything at this point?
My name is Jesse Pointe, I'm with the Los Angeles Police Department. I'm currently assigned to...
I'm currently assigned to West Valley Vice. Been a member of the Los Angeles Police Department for about 12 years now. I'm here in opposition of, I'm a little nervous because I've never done this before, so, a little better doing my job. Anyways, I'm here because I've gotten a lot of citizen complaints and concerns regarding this establishment, and this is on a regular basis leading up through present time. And the concerns that I received as a, as a vice supervisor is, again, it's some of the concerns that these citizens have addressed here. Drinking in public, they've been finding condoms in the parking lot, they've had problems with fights and stuff. We've monitored the location on a number of occasions where we've been there, and we noticed that this particular establishment lacks a supervision. People come and go, there's really, security guards don't really control what, what is occurring inside, and they don't bother to walk around and actually care for the residents and/or the people who own the businesses locally around there. I've sat out there for a number of hours at times and watched, and as you see, the Patreons come and they'll park in there, and at no time does any of the security guards of them come out to actually walk around and, and watch for the business community there. When I have been there, I have not seen the drinking in public or any of the other concerns. But what it does concern me is the fact that they don't bother to take the time to go out there and police themselves to make sure it doesn't become a problem, to send security guards out there and the management to ensure that this doesn't become a concern. And that's the only thing I'd like to say today.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Officer Ben Herskewitz. I've been with the Police Department for about six years now, and I just want to say that, or testify that I have personally driven each location, map 1, 2, 3, and 4, and can testify to those locations, if you have any questions on those, so.
Okay. Well, before we begin with council questions and discussion, we'll now turn over to the petitioners for a 30-minute presentation. And if these boards can be turned around at some point for their review, I'd appreciate that.
Honorable council members, is it possible for me to also address you from the same spot that the protester spoke? The staff?
Not unless you find it absolutely necessary in terms of space, if you can...
I do find it absolutely necessary.
For what purpose? Do you have visuals or a presentation, or...
Yes, I, I have exhibits, I have photographs, and it's very difficult to do that from the podium, and since the city attorney, my adversary, got to address you from the table closer, it seems to me fairness would require that I be given an equal opportunity to address you, as has my adversary.
Okay, well, it's not necessarily an adversary, but they are city staff, city employees, and we need to have them here. That's customary for us. If you can begin your presentation, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, first, we submitted a letter earlier. I'm going to wait until the gentleman seated to your right leaves so I can address you. A lady. Can you get that? There's somebody there next, he's talking. I need your undivided attention.
You have my attention, you can begin.
It's very important, this is a very important matter for my client, and we would like the opportunity to have everybody's full attention, we appreciate it. I have been in communication with Mr. Cotty for the last couple of months, begging him and begging the city to provide me with the evidence the city claims would be relevant to the issue before you, which is whether or not there are other sites reasonably available in the city for this particular establishment. Repeatedly begging Mr. Cotty and city clerk in the planning department for that evidence. It arrived yesterday. Yesterday, I have a letter here, and I'd like to offer this into evidence and have this marked as an exhibit for this hearing, a letter yesterday dated February 26 from Thomas Henry delivering me the maps. I submit that this is not a fair way to proceed. We've asked that this matter be postponed so we can do a thorough analysis of the maps that are being presented to you today, since they were given to us only yesterday. So our first request is to postpone the hearing to allow us to become adequately prepared. If that is denied, we'll go ahead and do the best we can under protest. And what we did is when we got the exhibits, is I drove out to the valley, I met Max Amati, who's here, who'll be addressing you also, also Mr. Jamal, who's the manager of the establishment, also Dean Gettleson is present. But we went out and did the best we could, given less than a day's time, to prepare for today's hearing. And what we did is we videotaped the four areas that the city staff claims are available for adult uses. We attempted to bring an equipment apparatus in this morning so we could show you the videotape. It's not very long, it's just a few minutes, to demonstrate to you that the city staff is plainly wrong when it claims that there are four areas available for us. We were not, we were not allowed to bring in the equipment. I spoke to the sergeant-at-arms there, and he said we had to go through the city clerk's office. We went down to the city clerk's office, and we were refused. So we're going to do the next best thing. We have the videotape, I'd like to offer it into evidence now, but I would ask you not to vote on this matter until you've had a chance to see our evidence. It's not fair, it's a denial of due process under the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and the California Constitution for the hearing examiners of the tribunal to reject evidence. Here is the evidence. If you have a monitor, we can play it for you now. I'd like to hand it to you. Now, I tried to hand this information to the clerk, but the sergeant-at-arms, I'll wait till I have the attention of the chair. I tried to contact the clerk to present the tape directly to the clerk, but I was told I could not approach the clerk. So I'm asking you now on the record to take the tape and to show it to every council member before the members vote. Can somebody from the clerk's office come and get the tape from me? Because the sergeant-at-arms will not allow me to go beyond the rope here that prevents me from getting closer. So I'd like to make somebody deliver the tape. I'd like to do it myself, but I don't want to be arrested by the sergeant-at-arms. So can I deliver the evidence to you?
Yes, if we can ask one of the sergeants to take the tape, and for your benefit and the, and the benefit of the members, I'll, I'll hold your time for just a minute. We do have a request for a monitoring VCR to be brought up, so we can view it here now.
Thank you. So as not to take time while we're waiting for the VCR, I can proceed to make other comments. We also took individual snapshots of the four properties identified by the city staff in its report to you, which was summarized by Mr. Green a moment ago. And with all due respect to Mr. Green, we have to respectfully disagree with his presentation. Now, to make sure that this presentation is understandable, we're going to try to correspond our presentation to the designation that the city has used in its presentation. Basically, what the city has done is designated four areas, areas 1, 2, 3, and 4, and our photographs match the city's area. I went here myself yesterday, and also Max Amati went here yesterday to take the shots. The first scene is of the property at 8370 Balboa. The city claims that this property is available for an adult use. That statement is false. Here are photographs, we have them marked A, B, C, and D. These show, for example, and Max Amati will comment further on this, he's a professional planner, first, there are residences right across the street from this industrial park. And one of the findings you have to make is that there are other, there are other properties available in the city that comply with Section 1270 of the Municipal Code. You cannot make that finding because, at least with respect to Area 1, the property the city points out is not available for a couple of reasons. One, it's too close to residential property, and we show that with the photographs. And secondly, we checked with the, the broker, and the properties are not available, and most of all, it's not even suitable for any type of theater operation or adult cabaret, and that'll be explained later. We have the photographs here, I'd like these to be received into evidence by this tribunal. So if the sergeant-at-arms can come, this is marked, we've got those as Area 1, A, B, C, and D, and you'll have further testimony on that. And you'll have aerial photographs, as I said, they're only presented to me yesterday, so we had to scramble to prepare for this hearing, and we're not waiving our right to claim that the hearing is improper because we've not been given adequate notice, notwithstanding repeated requests for advanced evidence on this. We went to Area 2, which is also depicted in the aerial photographs. Area 2 was misidentified by the city staff. It was falsely stated that it was 7950 Daiily, D-A-I-L-Y. That's not true. The building depicted in the photograph from the staff presentation is actually 7949 Woodley. And I went to there, I personally talked to Cindy Goodfellow, G-O-O-D-F-E-L-L-O-W. She's the manager of the property. I have her business card here, I won't read her phone number and address into the record, but I'd like to offer her business card as another exhibit to be part of the record of this case. And if one of the sergeant-at-arms would come here to take it, I'd be very appreciative, although I would just as soon approach, but I don't want to be wrestled to the ground. Cindy Goodfellow told me that there were no properties available in that building. There are a few little offices, it's an office structure, and it's owned apparently by the City of Los Angeles, it's the Van Nuys Airport. Also, across the street from the property are residences, so this particular property is not available, and you cannot make a finding consistent with the evidence presented that it's available for an adult use according to the evidence we got. Also, I have Exhibit 2A here, that's part of the group that should have been included in the package. This shows the address, 7949 Aeroplex, and it's not available. It's a small, little office building, and it's too close to residences, it's not appropriate. It also is noisy because it's right at the Van Nuys Airport. Now, Area 3, we took two photos. We have Area 3 now. I went there personally myself, and we also have it photographed. It's a place called Carpet Vinyl, V-I-N-Y-L, it says wholesale warehouse. We have it marked as Area 3 Exhibits A and B. I personally walked into this building, went upstairs, and talked to the occupant. The building, contrary to the representation of Mr. Green and his staff, is not available for rent, it's occupied. It's been occupied for at least the last three weeks by the current occupant. Now, I don't know when the staff went by and took a picture of the building, because the photograph that the staff has attached to its presentation shows a rental sign on the front of the building. But yesterday, it was not for lease or rent, and I was told that it hasn't been that way for a long time, which raises a question that your city attorney should advise you now. Now, I ordinarily don't ask for advice from the city attorney, because when I was before you in December of 1999, and I told you then, and I realize not all of you are the same people, there's been quite a shift in the city council makeup, hopefully it's for the better, because I got to tell you, it wasn't pleasant appearing here in December 1999 when nobody listened. And I know that one of your council members who's not even here today, Mark Ridley-Thomas, takes the position that the only thing we're entitled to do is speak to you, but under the due process clause, we are not required to have you listen to us, which of course is not right. But in any event, in December of 99, I told the council then that the burden of proof was on the city to prove the existence of alternative locations. The chairman of the council meeting at that time turned to the city attorney and said, "Is Diamond right? Is the burden on us to demonstrate availability, or does Diamond have to prove nonavailability?" And the city attorney said, "Oh, no, Diamond has to prove nonavailability." Then the council voted 12 to 0 against us, we lost. We went to the Superior Court where we asked for an expedited hearing, and Mr. Cotty, who is sitting here right in front of you, told the judge in Department 85, or 86, the RIT Department, that we were wrong, we were not entitled to an expedited hearing under the First Amendment and under CCP Section 1094.8. But the judge ruled against Mr. Cotty and ruled for us, saying we were entitled to an expedited hearing. So Mr. Cotty was wrong then, as was the deputy who advised the council that the burden was on us. In any event, the case proceeded to a hearing, and the judge reviewed the administrative record, reviewed the comments made by Mr. Burnson at the planning committee meeting that was held the day before the hearing, and ruled for us, ruled that the city council had no right to deny the exception. The judge also went a little further and ordered the city to grant the exception, but her main ruling was that there was no evidence to support the denial, and there were no findings to support the denial. The city appealed, and on the major issues presented to the Court of Appeal, which was, were the findings adequate, and was there evidence to support the findings, the Court Appeal agreed with us and ruled that the Superior Court was correct, and also awarded us costs that have not yet been paid by the city. Right now, as we sit here, the city owes my client about $2,600 in costs which have not yet been paid. The Court of Appeal did say, however, that the city could reconsider the matter. On that limited issue of whether the city could reconsider it, we objected, which is why we don't believe we should be here today. If the city does have the right to reconsider the matter, it should be reconsidered by the zoning administrator, not by you, because the issue before you is whether or not there was evidence presented to the zoning administrator in 1999 to justify a denial of the exception. You're now sitting basically as a trial court, not as an appellate tribunal. What you should do is remand this to the city zoning administrator for a complete evidentiary hearing on the issue. So again, we respectfully protest the manner in which the hearing is being conducted, because you're an appellate tribunal, you're not a zoning administrator trial court. But in any event, we're here under protest. We went to the final location, Area 4, on hearing, and we have photographs of that also, and clearly, Area 4 is not adequate, there are houses in the back, and we have photographs to show the houses. We also have photographs showing the Area 3, A, and B. Now, in addition to that, we also have the photographs of Area 2, additional photographs marked D, E, B, and C. These are additional photographs that should be part of the package that show that the property in Area 2, the one that Cindy Goodfellow told us, told us was not available, is not available. There's, there's residential property right across the street. In summary, we'd like to tender the photographs, and if I may ask, if I may ask the staff now if the videotape is ready to be played. Is it ready? Yeah, we're ready now.
Sound?
There'll be sound, yes. Thank you very much. This is a tour of the four areas that the city says are available for us.
870 Balboa Boulevard. It's referred to Area 1 and/or map number 1. As you can see, this property is occupied by JBL. It has assigned for lease, but when we called, they said it's not available. We called the agent Matt Hein, and with his phone number showing there, 818-716-3000. This property, across the street from it, is apartment buildings, and in the back, as it's shown now, it's occupied by industrial businesses. It's all occupied in the back, nothing available. And on this side, as you can see, the apartment buildings across the street. So this is the reason why this property is and should be disqualified. These apartment buildings across the street disqualify this property, refer to Area number 1, and also provide it on map number 1. Now, we go to the second property. As you can see, it has the number 7949, and on the documentation the city provided, it shows 16142 Daiily Drive. That number doesn't exist. And the front picture of the building, it shows that it's offices, and it's on land jet area, actually part of the airport. So now, the address is wrong, and in the back of it is the airport, and is not available for SOB business, and it's a jet land, close to residential also. Now, we're going to show you a little bit on the back of this street. Very soon, you're going to see an airplane, there it is, and a sign says Jet Center, the Jet Center. And actually, this is airport land or city government land. So definitely, this area disqualified for two reasons. It's a jet land and close to residential area. Now, from this side of the building to where we're going, there is a... Now, from this side of the building to where we're going, there is a trailer park within 500 feet. Ten side, on the left-hand side of the truck pickup, to our left as we drive. We're going to step outside the car and show you on video. There is the sign, Trailer Park, Woodley Trailer Park. And as we turn left, there is the building coming up. Where is the proposed property? There it is, 7943. And where the trees are, behind the trees here, are the 7949 Woodley, which is not 16142 Daily Drive. That doesn't exist. Now, to the third property, which we see now, first of all, there is no sign it's available for lease. And this property being leased three weeks ago to a construction company, and again, no sign for lease, leased to a construction company three weeks ago, and it has houses in the back, as you can see. Now, we're going to focus on the houses in the back. It just sits right there. You see now, there is the houses in the back. So this property, first, is not available. Secondly, there is houses in the back, so it does disqualify. So this third property, or Area number 3, disqualify for the houses in the back. And now, we're going to go around and show you some of the houses in the back as we drove. We're going to turn left and go behind the property, and as you can see, now we're turning, and you can see the houses. The houses all the way to the end of the street. And when we reach that end, we're going to mention the street name, and we're going to show you how far it is from Sherman Way. So this building disqualifies. First of all, it's not available. There is houses behind it, and there is no sign for rent or lease on the front. As you can see, there is a lot of houses here, and they are within 500 feet. So definitely, it doesn't qualify. Now, we're approaching the end of the street, and I think we're going to take a shot for the sign, street name. Here we go. The street name is Kentley Street, 10,500 West. Kentley Street. And now, we're going to show you how far it is from Sherman Way. As you can see, there is all houses around the property, so it disqualifies. Now, we're trying to focus on the sign where it says Sherman Way by the street light. Here it is, Sherman Way. And the property is on 10,859 Sherman Way. Now, the fourth property, which we start showing you already, is you can see there is houses behind it. So I can say from the beginning, it does disqualify. We measure it all the way up to, from the back of the building to this yellow line, it is within 500 feet. So now, I'm going to repeat once again, from this yellow line all the way to the back of the building to the wall, where you can see those streets or that white pickup or truck is parked, it's 500 feet exactly from the yellow line. So you can, we can say, yeah, it's available. It's true. It's for lease. But from this yellow line to all the way in the back, it falls in with the 500 feet radius. So this building, it disqualifies also because there is houses in the back. As you can see, on Roscoe going east. Now, if you make a right turn on the Varial, again, I think the picture is going to show Roscoe. Now, if you go eastern Roscoe, when you hit the Varial, it's the street behind the property, you're going to see the houses. This is the street. Now, we're turning right, and all we're going to see is houses. And definitely, it does not qualify because these houses fall within the 500 feet radius. So this is the fourth property. It does not qualify. The first one doesn't qualify because there is apartment across the street from it. The second one, it's on a jet land. It is in airport land, government land, city land, and is not available, plus the address is wrong. And the third one, the one on Sherman Way, 10,859, there is houses behind it. And the fourth one, the one now we're showing, the houses in the back of them, it falls within 500 feet. So three of them, they fall within the 500 feet radius, and one of them on airport land is not, is jet land, close to residential also. Now, all of them, all four properties fall in with the residential area, and one of them is, again, airport land, Jet Center. So they all disqualify. And this video is evidence that we did our homework, and we cannot find any other location. So we ask the honorable city council members and the honorable judges to give us our permit based on the exception. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a nice day. Thank you.
The, we would have done a better job in terms of the tape had we been given more time. We apologize for the way it was presented. We didn't have a chance to polish it up and edit it and so forth.
Let me hold for your time for just a minute while we move this monitor back out of the way. Let me also advise you that I'm holding your time at six minutes and a couple of seconds left in your time for presentation.
We respectfully ask for a little more time. Max Amati is going to address you in a moment. I just wanted to make one final comment. I'm not unaware of the, I'm not unaware of the concerns of the neighbors, but those same concerns were expressed in 1999 when the application was first considered by the zoning administrator. And those complaints that you heard today were also aired in 1999, and they related to the way the business was run long before we asked for the exception, because this was a bikini bar for many, many years. There has always been a parking problem there. It's not new, and that's something that has to be resolved in a different forum, not this hearing today. That evidence is irrelevant to the narrow issue before you today. Now, if in fact the staff tries to argue in rebuttal to our presentation that there are still other properties available, we would object to that on the ground that we've been given no opportunity to discuss other properties. We simply focused on the four examples the city said showed the properties were available. So we again ask for a postponement of this hearing if the city tries to say that other properties are available that were not part of our videotape. Because what should have happened in this case, and what I asked for over and over again, was all of the evidence of the city and sufficient time to give us a chance for a better presentation, which is what the Ninth Circuit requires and what all the courts require. Without further ado, I now introduce Max Amati, who's a professional planner. And although other, we have other witnesses here, too. Because of time constraints, they won't speak. If you have specific questions of them, they'd be glad to try to answer them. There were questions about fighting that was going on, for example. They can answer those questions, even though it's not relevant to this case. One final point before Max approaches the podium. The police officer very candidly admitted that when he's been there, he has not seen drinking in public. And also, there was no mention of any arrests ever being made in the last two years. So we have a crime-free establishment. The people who spoke in opposition are primarily concerned about the parking problem, but there's been no evidence presented that this is a law enforcement problem in terms of any crime. Not one arrest has been made in the last couple of years. But anyway, that evidence is irrelevant. Max, could you approach?
Good morning. My name is Max Amati. I'm a land use surveyor and land use professional planner. Basically, on a one-day notice, at the request of Dino's and Mr. Diamond, I went out to look at the four properties to decide if they're indeed qualified under this theory. And since a lot had been spoken, I'm going to cut to the chase. Property 1 on Balboa Street, I personally spoke to Mr. Hein, the broker for Cushman &amp; Field, and he explained that the property that was shown on the survey, 8370, was a long-term lease by JBL, the speaker manufacturer. And indeed, that sign applies to a whole bunch of other properties that that property owner owns as well as that site. It does not apply to that address. And since I had a very limited focus and limited time, we had to go to decide if that property, even if available, qualified, is less than 250 feet to residential across the street. Property number 2 on Sherman Way, we looked at it. That property was not available. The sign was removed. Mr. Diamond went and spoke with the property owner. They said it's already been leased. Notwithstanding that, that property is less than 100 feet from the residential behind it, and the map clearly shows it, and I'm surprised the staff didn't catch it, since the map is to scale. And to the third property on Woodley Drive, based on my research as of today, that property belongs, is a land lease to the City of Los Angeles. That means the building owners only own the building. They do not own the property, and the city has indeed restriction imposed on it on its own, on the property. Notwithstanding that comment, that property is within 500 feet of the runway of the airport. That would be hard to argue. That is not a noisy proposition. That definitely doesn't qualify under the noise ban, and it is indeed within 225 feet of the trailer park, which is the only spot marked on the zoning map white, which is the residential zone. Of course, in addition to all that, Ms. Goodfellow told us that this property generally is not available except a few administrative offices, and she determined that would not even qualify for the kind of business we propose. And the last property on Deering Avenue, they all are within 500 feet. The entire property from beginning to end, to the middle of the street, is 500 feet. No spot of that property on Deering Avenue qualifies. In terms of other properties, if the city was to say, I typically require 30 to 40 days of time to go to look at this thing, have it surveyed, other than to run the wheel or the laser gun. So for the limited time, it quite appeared to me, none of these properties qualify on its face. If there is any question, I'm available.
Thank you. Does this conclude your presentation?
Do we have any more minutes, or is it over?
You have about a minute left.
We do have other witnesses here available to answer questions. Again, we like to reserve a minute for rebuttal, so we'll yield now and we'll save our rebuttal time. And again, we object to any evidence of other sites, since we haven't had a chance to review those. We'd ask that the matter be postponed, and we ask for rebuttal time. Thank you.
Okay. Before proceeding to council discussion and debate, I will ask the team of representatives of different city departments before us if they wish to add anything or respond at this time to the presentation.
Please, Mr. President. Thank you. If I could address one point. Mr. Diamond repeatedly argued that he wasn't given the information in advance of this hearing today, and I have a letter dated February 21st stating that Mr. Diamond was provided with the findings of the zoning administrator, and also a request that if he has, if he wants to submit any evidence, or if he wants to view any of the evidence, he can do so by contacting the city clerk or the zoning administrator. Thank you.
And we, I called Mr. Green when we got the letter, because the letter says, "If I have any questions, call him." I called him, and I got a recording. I left my number. He never returned my call. I have a letter dated February 26 from Thomas Henry delivering the evidence, and I'll offer this into evidence now. It's my only copy, but I'd like to have it part of the record. That was yesterday, unless they misdated their own letter, but it arrived yesterday at my office. Thank you, sir.
Again, he was given the opportunity to view the evidence in advance. I can't speak as to when he actually got the evidence, but he could have come to the city clerk on the date. This letter was faxed on the 21st. He could have come to the city clerk to view that evidence on that date, well in a week in advance of this hearing today. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Daniel Green, zoning administrator. The information that Mr. Diamond requested of me was provided to someone who identified himself as an employee of Mr. Diamond, and he came up the following day and picked it up from our office. Let me refer to a couple of maps.
Hold on, Mr. Diamond, before, let them go through their response.
He doesn't give the date.
And I'll give you an opportunity to rebut once again after, but let me hear from all of them first.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the council members look at, for example, map number 2, they will see a very large area in gray within which the zoning is proper. There are properties, as Mr. Diamond has pointed out, on the fringe, which are across the street from residential use, so we don't disagree on that. Mr. Diamond and his field survey only looked at that fringe area for the most part, rather than looking in the heart of the areas in gray. If you look at map number 1, the same thing. There's a very large area. We took a picture of a site on Balboa. It had a sign indicating the property was for lease. That's not to say that there are no other properties in that large acreage that are not for lease. As we understand the court's action, we are not to act as brokers and find very specific sites. In fact, the court said that if we can find neighborhoods or sectors that are generally available, that that may be sufficient. And so, we're not saying that 8370 would work, would be an appropriate location, but it does give you an identity of a piece of the area. Within map number 1, there may be several hundred properties. We didn't feel it was necessary to take a picture of every single property, measure the distance from every single property. And so, the representation on these maps and the aerial photographs, which you can see, there are vast numbers of buildings, and from time to time, any one of them in the past three years will have been available and will become available. So I think perhaps Mr. Diamond, too literally, looked at our addresses as the only possible addresses. So I think I would still stand by the information presented to the council as being accurate and complete.
Okay. Anything else? I saw some react when, in the presentation, the petitioner mentioned about a lack of arrests or drinking in public or something along those lines. Please depart.
I can testify to that I've made roughly 10 to 15 arrests out of that location in the past probably year for drinking in public, several narcotics violations. So as far as being a crime-free zone, I would not agree with that at all.
Okay. Thank you. And what? Go ahead.
In addition, we did a request for calls for service to that immediate area, and in particular, we narrowed it down to that address, and I have that available for you guys if you'd like to see that also. And that time period covers from January 1st of 2001 to December 31st of 2001.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, you have a minute, balanced time.
What I do in these kinds of cases, and what I like to do in this case, is go to every property that's in the area that Mr. Green says is available and photograph it, get a parcel map, put a book together, and identify every parcel. We will do that. Now that the city has identified the areas, we'll do that for you. That's why we need, I would say, 30 days to make that presentation. We will go to every site, it's in the gray area that Mr. Green says is available, we'll photograph it for you, and we'll give you a description, and we'll tell you whether it's for rent or lease or sale. Right now, there's no evidence that any of those properties are available. We went to the so-called representative samples and proved systematically and conclusively that none of them is available. Now, under the Lim versus Long Beach case, which I was privileged to handle in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, the court said that if the city does not identify specific properties, it has to give you general areas and enough time so you can rebut it by showing whether or not the areas given are in fact suitable. We've been given no time to do that, so we're asking for a short delay to make that presentation. But as the record now stands, there's no evidence before you that would justify findings. There's political motivation to make the wrong decision, and the problem is, if you make the wrong decision, it costs the city a lot of money. I know they just paid out about $800,000 for a project in Chinatown. I know they just paid out about $800,000 for a project in Chinatown. The city, the applicant there won on the base of Young versus Simi Valley.
If I can ask you to conclude now, please.
We very much like the opportunity to go through the gray areas and videotape every piece of property, photograph it, and make you a complete presentation to show that nothing is available. Nothing is available. Is that right, Max? Step forward.
To the extent that opportunity allows, we have looked, and there is not an opportunity that fits the criteria. They're not available.
And Mr. Gettleson is here. He's not going to speak, but I'll just introduce you. He was the one who looked in 1999. He submitted an affidavit saying he looked throughout the city and could find no properties. And we're here three years later, and the city has still not produced one property that meets the legal requirements. So we respectfully ask you not to do the political thing. Everybody who runs for office always says they're not politicians, they're statesmen. They'll follow the law. They'll do the right thing. I've yet to see that happen at local level, because what you do is you yield to the local councilman in whose district the project is located. You don't care about the taxpayers. You care about politics. I don't expect anything other than a 12 to 0 vote, just like last time, but we do have to make the record for court, and we're doing so.
Thank you very much.
We don't have any expectation of justice here, but we're doing the best we can. Thank you so much.
Let us proceed with council discussion and debate. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as the crime-free area, looking at the types of calls for that particular location, dispute, assault with a deadly weapon, domestic violence, battery, disturbing the peace, battery, and a number of units that went code six at that location during the one-year time span, in addition to the arrest cited by the officer. In response to this, I would ask, while the city has given a general overview of available locations, not specific sites, did Mr. Diamond or any of your representatives try to determine a specific site that would be available? You haven't stated any of those, sir. You rebutted the representatives from the city on the specific sites that you say are depicted in the photos. While they are general areas, you never offered any locations, other than your planning representative, who stated that there are no sites at all available in that part of the city.
In 1999, Mr. Gettleson submitted an affidavit to the zoning administrator and to the city council stating that he went all over, looked, and could find no properties that met the requirements of the code. That evidence was unrebutted at the zoning administrator's hearing, where all the people spoke about traffic and parking and crime. Nobody spoke about alternative locations. The state of the record is, there are no such properties. Now, the city's been given the opportunity to tell us where there are properties, and the city still refuses to do so. Instead, it picked out properties that are legally unqualified. But we have looked. Now, how do you prove a negative?
Excuse me. I just asked one question, sir. Have you looked since 1999 for any specific locations?
Yes.
Thank you. The next issue is, this particular location, Frisky Kitty, started as a bikini bar. And at that particular time, there was not the restrictions imposed, as there are today, against the current entertainment establishment. And what was conveniently done is a transition from a bikini bar to the adult entertainment. And there are restrictions on adult entertainment. This specific location is less than 500 feet from residential areas. They cannot get that permit to operate because of that condition. And if we're looking at the criteria regarding the impact on the community, the impact on the residential area, they state that all the sites that they refute are within 500 feet. Well, this specific location is within that region, and it's not appropriate. I would ask for the council to deny the exemption. I would ask that the city attorney continue on this, along with the other representatives from our government. This case has impact on this entire city. And if we sit by and let this happen, the impact will devastate neighborhoods, will devastate business communities. But this particular location is not shown to be a good neighbor, and has become an eyesore in that particular part of the community. And I would ask that we deny that exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Is that a motion? Is there a second? Ms. Perry seconds. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, when this last came before us, and we knew we were going to set the hearing in advance, I did ask the city attorney for the court case and had a chance to review it. I'd like to say, let me read from this appellate court decision. "The city conceivably could also comply with Section 1222a20 by making findings showing the existence of neighborhoods, blocks, or other sectors possessing the four defining characteristics required for sites reasonably available for adult businesses." We've been told that we didn't provide a specific site. The court didn't tell us we had to provide a specific site. It did, as Mr. Green suggested, give areas. Members of the council, look at this map. This is a site that was shown. This is an area in which it could be found. I think the zoning administrator has complied. Let me also say that there was an impression created that, gee, because each of these sites that was proposed was within 500 feet of a residential area, that disqualified it. This existing site that's before us today is within 500 feet of a residential area, and in fact, what they're asking for an exemption. The zoning administrator did not say that these sites were not within 500 feet of a residential area. They said they considered it in addition to how close it is to religious institutions, schools, public parks, et cetera. And in fact, what the court said is, look at the four findings for granting an exemption, and provide that list to ourselves to satisfy that there are other lists available. So this is meant to be, looking at these other sites, which could qualify, per the zoning administrator's submittal with the city attorney's advice, areas in which the four findings for an exemption could be considered. And that's what I think is what the court asked us to do, and is what we have done. The disqualification that was mentioned vis-à-vis noise in the airport, how many of us have driven down Century Boulevard and seen many adult entertainments that are located on Century Boulevard with very much noisier airports than Ben Eys? So I think that that is not a disqualification in terms of what we've been asked for to do by the court, what has been supplied by the evidence by the planning department, the city attorney, and the police department.
Thank you. A brief rebuttal?
Yeah, very brief. Two things. The two council members who have just spoken have exhibited a misunderstanding of the law. First, Mr. Zine, with all due respect, it is true that the current project is within 500 feet of an apartment building zoned to the south. But your code says this, under 1270 and under the exception. This is what it says. Listen very carefully. If you have a property that meets all of the requirements of the zoning code with respect to distance from another adult use, distance from a church, a school, a playground, and if it meets the zoning requirements of the city, if the only basis for disqualifying the property is proximity to residential property, then and only then can you apply for an exception. It was never disputed that there's properties zoned residential within 500 feet to the south of the current project. That's not in dispute. The motion by the council member who made the motion totally misunderstands that concept, because he said, because this project is within 500 feet, it's not qualified. That's the whole point.
Thank you. And I know you're going to have a chance to rebut that in court.
That's why we're here for the exception.
You had your time, your 30 minutes. I'm allowing for brief comments.
Now, I have to reply to Councilwoman Misakowski, because she made a misstatement. She said that all you have to do is point to a general area.
Okay. Hold on.
Mr. President, I move the previous question, Mr. President.
Pause, pause, please. We have one more speaker waiting to be heard, actually, now two.
I move the previous question.
Well, it's not your turn yet, Mr. Weiss. You still have 30 seconds.
I did not make a statement. I read from the court order of the appellate court. That is not a random statement.
So that's it. I had given you an opportunity to briefly rebut. You're taking quite a bit of time. We're in the council discussion now. You had your 30 minutes. I'm going to ask you to please sit down. And I know you're videotaping it for future use. No, no.
You have 10 seconds?
No. Mr. Pacheco.
I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if we're going to answer them here, but two things. If we're talking about an exception because you're near a residential community, what's the criteria for granting or denying the exception? I mean, there has to be some criteria. Okay? The second thing is, if we're talking about alternative sites, and they are within a residential area, can we, does that, does that equal, does that make it an optional site, or an available site, with the exception being granted? From my standpoint is, if we're going to grant an exception, then do we get to decide which of the many sites available we can grant that exception to? Or do we have to go only with the one that the applicant thinks is appropriate? Do we get that option? If we have five sites that require exceptions, can we pick one of the five, or does the applicant get to pick the five? I mean, I just, are we cornered, or are we cornered into the only site that's currently asking for an exception?
May I respond?
Because we're here, because it's, everyone agrees that this site does not technically qualify, and that's why we're asking for an exception. So if this site doesn't technically qualify, and the 15 sites that were technically not qualified on the video, why can't we grant one of those sites an exception and let them move to a more appropriate site?
To answer your first question, this council...
Question is directed to staff.
All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This council must make a finding that if you choose to disapprove this exception, then you must make findings showing how a site consistent with 1270C is reasonably available elsewhere in the city of Los Angeles for the establishment or relocation of the subject establishment. Again, reasonably available is defined in the code as, "It's used as the proposed adult entertainment business is consistent with all applicable zoning codes, including 1270C; two, it's available for use, purchase, or rental as an adult entertainment business; three, it has adequate street access, street lighting, and sidewalks; and four, it is at least 500 feet away from any uses which are or may become obnoxious or offensive by reason of emission, odor, dust, smoke, or gas." Therefore, you must affirmatively find that there are sites elsewhere in the city that are reasonably available, based on what the zoning administrator and the police department have told you today. To answer your second question, we're not required to relocate the subject business. We just have to, we don't have to tell him where to go. He's free to go where he wants. But you can deny the exception if you find that other sites are reasonably available elsewhere in the city of Los Angeles for the relocation of his business. If there are sites reasonably available, and you make the appropriate findings, then you can deny the exception. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco. Ms. Perry.
Yes, I'd like to move to the previous question.
Okay. Let's open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. That ends council discussion. I'll give you two minutes for any final comments.
Yes. With respect to Councilwoman Misakowski's statement, it's only partially correct. It's not completely correct. Because if in fact what the city decides to do is present us with general areas and not give us specific addresses, the city's obligated to do that in sufficient time to give us the opportunity to go into the areas that the city has designated, and go one by one to the parcels and show why the areas are not available. That is what is deficient about the proceeding today, is that we are not given the chance to go to the general area. What we did do was go to the specific properties that the city said were available, and we proved conclusively that the city was wrong. So statistically, if the city gives us samples of available properties, and we prove conclusively that none of them is available, then we can extrapolate that the other properties are not available. But at a minimum, we have to be given the chance to go into the areas. That was not done. That's the defect. Secondly, the question by Councilwoman Pacheco reflects a total misunderstanding of what we've been doing here for the last hour, which is this. If the current property is only disqualified because of its proximity to a residential zone property, and is not disqualified for any other reason, then it can apply for an exception. If, for example, our property were disqualified because it's too close to a church, or too close to another adult business, then there's no provision for the exception. The opportunity to seek the exception doesn't exist. It only exists when the only disqualifying factor is proximity to residential zone property. So this project fits the exception process. It only fits it because it has one disqualifying factor. To answer the second part of Councilwoman Pacheco's question, if the city points to other properties that has the same defect, which is it's too close to residential properties, those properties are not available, because the code says, "To meet your requirement to show availability, the other properties can have no disqualifying factors, including proximity to residences." So his question was...
Thank you.
Can one of those properties seek the exception? The answer is no, under your code.
Thank you very much.
In conclusion, you have violated the First and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution by proceeding in the manner in which you proceeded, and you've misapplied the law and totally misunderstood it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Zine, anything before we take a vote?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The long debate has brought to the focus of this body what the court has directed, that we pay attention, we listen, and we evaluate all the circumstances and facts. We do have the right to deny an exemption, to authorize an exemption, when the circumstances are appropriate. This particular situation, it is appropriate to deny the exemption, and it's appropriate to support the zoning administrator's decision on this case. And that is my wish for this body to do.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a motion before us.
Yes, Mr. Zine's motion to deny the exemption, and I believe he would also wish to adopt the findings of the planning.
So in the same motion, adopt the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fourth with on this item. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
You have motions for...
Yeah. Messages are posted and referred.
And council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requested excused Friday, March 22nd. City business, a motion is required.
Ms. Reyes moves.
That clears the desk.
Before going into closed session, we have had a couple of requests for public comments come in, since we held public comment earlier in the meeting. So without objection, colleagues, I'd like to reopen the public comment period for today's meeting, and call forward a group of individuals, special guests here in chambers today. Ms. Doris Spates, Romerol Malvo, Roy Evans, Jessica Crenshaw, and Char Givon. Are you still with us?
Let's see if we need to organize here.
Go ahead.
Mr. President and council, my name is Roy Evans, and I'm here as a representative of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress, members and alumni from north, southwest, southeast, and west, from 1982 to 2002, um, 1992, I'm sorry, to 2002. And this is directed towards the Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas. We, the people of the city of Los Angeles, Eighth Council District, both current and veteran members of your original ownership government empowerment congress, neighborhood model, and who are beneficiaries of your vision that has now become our Los Angeles citywide legacy.
Acknowledge and appreciate you for making the words engage, educate, empower more than buzzwords to be imitated, but words that meant knowing the difference between asking too little of ourselves in our community and expecting too much, without educating ourselves, our neighbors, and thereby our community. Empowering ourselves with the knowledge of our communities, the problems in our communities, as well as its strengths, and always engaging ourselves in activities for the benefit of our communities. It is not to laud us as the original empowerment congress from which the current neighborhood councils were modeled. It is a statement for the record of the history of our city.
When the city charter reform debate began, we were closely involved in the debate. When we met with charter commissioners, made presentations about neighborhood councils, and wrote the members of the city council and the government efficiency committee to ensure the citywide system of neighborhood councils, and was formed. It was because of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress... of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment Dunn was established.
We are what we are because of who we are, and we are who we are because of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress. We are the anchors of Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas that Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas put in place to affix the good, eliminate the negative, and accent the positive in our communities. What is the testament of outstanding leadership? It is outstanding people working in and for their communities who produce outstanding results in unseemly situations. For this and more, we thank Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas.
Hello, my name is Doris J. Spates. I'm an empowerment congress alumnus, Southwest Area Neighborhood Development Council. I'm a chartered member of 1992. We acknowledge and appreciate Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas for our flight. He did not guide us through, but he soared his wings of commitment and responsiveness to the community's needs. The councilman's hand of determination flowed openly, as does the openness of the feathers of an eagle. His wings have carried us, for truly, there has been much movement, turning, banking, and willing over the years. We thank you, Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, and will always remember you as our golden eagle.
Hello, my name is Jessica Crenshaw, and I'm a member of the 2001-2002 North Area Neighborhood Development Council of the Eighth Council District Empowerment Congress, founded by our distinguished councilman, Mark Ridley Thomas. I acknowledge and appreciate you, Council Ridley Thomas, Councilman Ridley Thomas, for being a visionary and seeing what our community could be with your guidance. Your unparalleled leadership has caused businesses to invest in our community, thereby creating jobs. Your leadership has brought to our community quality, affordable housing, has added noticeable improvements to our streets and sidewalks, and has opened the door to community participation by way of the empowerment congress. I applaud you for speaking up against bias and injustice in our community, for being a positive role model for our youth, and for your tireless efforts on behalf of our community, and I want to thank you.
This one is from Carlette Caldwell, veteran member of the Eighth Council District Empowerment Congress, serving from 1992 to present in the southwest and west area. For sharing your position of councilman with us, your constituents, by commissioning us, your constituents with the power to act and the authority to take control of our neighborhoods, for knowing when to lead, when to teach, when to listen, and when to follow, and when to let go, for your dedication to your family and your commitments to your community. This one is for Laverne H. Kimble, empowerment congress alumnus, southwest and west NDC since 1992. She acknowledges and appreciates you for having the foresight to empower ordinary residents of the Eighth Council District like herself and to equip us with the proper mechanisms to revolutionize the structure of city government. You provided a vehicle for communities to come together and create an agenda to improve the quality of lives in their neighborhoods. Your immeasurable efforts never ceased until our agenda was completed. Through your vision of empowerment, the city of Los Angeles now has a platform to establish neighborhood councils citywide. Thank you for playing a vital role in shaping the city future.
This statement's from, excuse me, from Romerol Malvo, empowerment congress 1993. Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas, we acknowledge and appreciate you for the vision to see past the unrest of April 1992, to envision this network of civically empowered communities that South Los Angeles could be. For the 10-year commitment of time, energy, and staff to creating and sustaining the empowerment congress as a vehicle the residents of the Eighth District could use to shape the life quality in their community. For helping the members of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress to achieve the kind of results that has made the congress a recognized model of civic engagement.
Acknowledges from Clarence Jackson, member of the Southwest NDC 1998. Acknowledge and appreciate you for the establishment of the constituent center, a permanent facility where residents can engage, exchange ideas, and seek solutions to community problems. For making yourself accessible to members of the grassroots community and taking time to listen to and fight for the needs and concerns of the neighborhood residents. For creating the empowerment congress and providing the leadership that ensured that the idea became a reality. For being trustworthy, dependent, and honest.
If I can ask you to conclude too, please?
This is the last one.
Okay.
This one is for Aretha Ensley, empowerment congress southwest alumni, 1992 to present. For continuing your hard work and for the care and support you have given the residents of the Eighth Council District. You led the way with courage and fortitude, and you were never afraid to stand up and speak for what you believe. Continue to forge ahead. Thanks for everything. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for coming down here and for sharing that with us. Also, would just like to comment that we had a city council meeting yesterday in Exposition Park, and there were several of your, I guess, successors at the meeting testifying on a number of different issues. And it is tremendous the work that's been down, done in the Eighth Council District. And your work will continue for many, much more time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I make this one comment? His building was built, it's like one phrase, his pharmacy was burnt down during the uprising, and I would feel really sick if he didn't have his voice heard.
Go ahead.
Thank you. From Gil Matthews, empowerment congress southwest alumnus 1992. Your efforts being made to bring redevelopment to the Eighth District, creating jobs and removing blight, promoting the democratic process of inclusion, always creating pride in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, is the desk clear?
Yes, the desk is here, clear for closed session.
Then, in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
34A, which is settlement in the case of Peter Vansen versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $275,000.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That matter's approved. Next item?
34C, settlement in the case of Rexon International versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $325,000.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved as well.
And 34D, in the case of Mejay versus City of Los Angeles, and that settlement in the amount of $210,000.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That is approved. Let's send the closed session items forthwith, please. Next item?
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements? Announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
2:30, we will be having a special meeting, Joint Housing and Budget and Finance Committee meeting on forwarding the housing trust fund recommendations from the mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Other announcements?
Mr. President, Information Technology General Services scheduled a meeting at 2:00 PM. Five minutes.
Any other announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions.
I have one.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn our meeting today in honor of the memory of Ms. Pat Eastman, a longtime resident and leader in the community of Watts who passed away last Friday at the age of 95. Pat served her country in World War II as a member of the U.S. Army Women's Auxiliary Corps, and she's devoted much of her personal time and energy to the cause of the Democratic Party and also to her union, which was the aerospace union. Pat was president of the Astro Jet Club organization. She was chairperson of NOW Watts Chapter. She was a member of the Westminster Neighborhood Association. She was the vice president of the Watts NAACP. She was elected to, a delegate to the LA County Democratic Committee. She was elected as a delegate to the State Democratic Party. She was a California senior legislator. She was chairperson of Parkside Manor Housing Track for six years. She was a member of the National Negro Council of Negro Women. She was on the advisory committee for the CRA, for Martin Luther King Jr. Shopping Center. And many people credit Pat Eastman with lobbying at our nation's capital on behalf of having the holiday that we celebrate for Martin Luther King Jr. Each year, as you know, the city of Los Angeles, through the commission of the Status of Women, selects 15 outstanding women. Each one of us gets to nominate that person as pioneer, a pioneer award. These women exemplify outstanding community service and leadership in their neighborhoods. I just recently had nominated Pat Eastman as my 15th District Pioneer of the Year Award, and the ceremony was to be, is to be held next month, and I will present it to her posthumously. So she was, Pat Eastman was a treasure of her community, and she will be sorely missed by those far and wide who were influenced by this wonderful woman of Watts. So I ask that you join in, adjourning in Pat's memory.
Any others? Ms. Zine?
Mr. President, request for adjourned memory of Harry L. Hodges, Sr. Mr. Hodges was a resident of both Canoga Park and Winnetka for over 50 years. He retired from the city of Los Angeles as a senior inspector for the Bureau of Contractors Administration. His daughter Nancy Hodges is assistant to Senator Richard Alarcon, his son Harry L. Hodges, Jr., four grandchildren, three extended grandchildren. He is also survived by three brothers and two sisters. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
I'd like to be a second on that. And colleagues, ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of Jose Vitella. Some of you may have noticed a special obituary in yesterday's newspaper. He was a 16-year-old Pacoima resident and sophomore at Francis Polytechnic High School in Sun Valley who's suffered from muscular dystrophy and was in declining health, and certainly passed away due to complications of that illness. He was well-known around his campus because of his bright eyes and bright smile, always having a positive attitude, getting around the campus in his electric chair, high-fiving students up and down the hallways, as well as the administrators. He enjoyed surfing the web and developing his upper body strength in PE class. He passed away while riding on the school bus on the way to school Monday morning. He was described as a very affable young man with a wonderful and wintome smile, and he'll be sorely missed by his friends and family. I ask that we adjourn in his memory. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.